Let's call the meeting to order for the Deschutes County Commissioners for August 10, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have citizen input. I don't see any forms filled out. We do have several comments. Here is one from someone on Bear Creek Road concerning the speed limit and traffic dangers on Bear Creek. So I thank you for that. And then we have another one concerning the wildfire mapping. And they sent a letter in, and their address is in Lapine. And of course, if they are aware, the state will have a meeting tonight at 7:00 PM at the Deschutes County Fairgrounds. So if they want to go and give their comments in public too, but we will be definitely passing those on. So thank you for those. And I believe we do have a plaque that we received that we would love to acknowledge. Yes, we did it with our help of Deschutes County. The USS Oregon was commissioned on May 28, 2022, just a couple of months ago. Thank you for your donation. And we have enclosed the commending, enclosed many items commending the commissioning. So this is from Jim Lasher, the co-chair of the committee. So we have this beautiful plaque. And is anyone here to take our pictures with it? No. So we'll, we'll have to take our pictures later with this plaque. But thank you so much, Jim, for sending this. It's, it's printed on it. She flies with her own wing. So it's USS Oregon SSN 793 is the number. And we are an honorary plaque owner. So great job on us.
That's a submarine.
Yes.
So I was able to be at Pearl Harbor earlier this year, in fact. And there's a lot of history of World War II. There's a whole courtyard of all the submarine stories that have, you know, were involved with World War II and their commissioning and their fate, some of them, their fate. So yeah, for the people of Oregon, we represent Deschutes County. We were able to fund them. I think it was just $1,500, but really helped celebrate the commissioning of that submarine. So it's great to see us close the loop on that.
And my most favorite history professor at the University of Oregon was Professor Dolls. And I believe he was actually at Pearl Harbor, I believe, when he was 17 that morning. His stories were outstanding. I think he taught at the school a long time and, you know, amazing man and such a great history professor. So I thought one of my best. So in that memory. So we're, we're doing something good. Are there any other comments? So we can go on to the consent agenda?
Public comment?
No, no one filled out any forms.
Anybody else with any public testimony?
Can you fill out, get a sheet too, so you fill it up when you're done?
And no one online?
There's a phone call and one other person.
Do they have their hand raised?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if you, yeah, I mean, if you, if there's any way to confirm if they're asking for public testimony.
Could you check with them, Ryan? Please?
You can finish that form after testimony.
Yeah, go ahead. You can do it afterwards. You don't have to write it all down now.
Okay. And my name is Piper Lucas, and I live at 65729 Old Bend Redmond Highway in Bend, Oregon. And I've been watching the hearings and am so grateful that you guys are spending really good time being thoughtful about psilocybin coming into the county. I really appreciate that. And listening to the Monday meeting where Peter Gakowski was basically asking for help from constituents to advise with the TPMs. I, I don't know what the legal process is to have a committee at large. Dave, I bet you can speak to that. But this is moving fast. And I know that businesses are really concerned about doing this in the most safe way in the county. And we don't want to make neighbors angry. And we don't want to do any of that. We want to provide safe therapy for people in our county. So I am just asking or imploring you guys to think about a way in which business owners, land use attorneys, and other people who want to do the right thing for our county to give input.
But I'd like to reply to that and welcome. So I think of it as a scenario. So remember, we have, that was a great memo we had the other day too, talking about rural service centers, rural commercial, Tumalo, Terabon, you know, where are these places that would naturally possibly land as a, a usage that's, you know, opportunity to, you know, to do it outright, you know, conditional use or outright use. So the scenarios, you know, the scenario would be a rural service center, a rural commercial, or that the unincorporated communities, existing building or a new building, you know, production or not co-located. So just even a one pager saying, this is a scenario. This is a potential opportunity that, you know, somebody is looking at in this zone. Or is it, you know, an EFU ask for a service center? Because that, there's some really interesting items in there. And when we asked, I asked Peter specifically, I said, well, what if somebody just has this great vision for, and it doesn't really fit our code, our historical code? It could be a hearings officer. Does it, was it contemplated in the code? Is there a way to fit it in? Or would there a code change be needed? So there's opportunities to put some of that on paper and put it through this process.
Okay, great. So if I'm hearing correctly, you would, you would like a one-page write-up of different service centers and what they're thinking about?
Yeah. I mean, you know, just as I say, I think as a software developer scenario, you know, somebody rents existing building, or somebody builds new building on rural parcel in, you know, those zones that, that we think that there may be an opportunity, or a zone that wasn't even contemplated. Yeah. So then that's something to work with.
Okay. Thank you.
And I mean, I guess I'd like to say that the staff memo we received the other day may have been classifying psilocybin service centers under an inappropriate occupancy use, which, you know, the, the, the zones where a service center is, would be authorized flow from that occupancy use classification. So I, I think that in, as we continue this discussion, we need to both open that item back up. And I had also suggested that we, starting from the top, try to think about these time, place, and matter rules from the perspective of constraining scale. Because I think that's what people are actually really concerned about, is a huge psilocybin production facility next door to their house. So if there's ways that we could take a scale-based approach to putting sideboards around psilocybin production and service centers, as opposed to a zone-based approach, I, I think that that would be, that would better serve us. So I am actually hoping that we can see a significantly overhauled staff memo next time we, we deliberate on this issue.
Conversations are happening.
With that, with that in mind, I would, I would recommend that members of, members of the business community who are contemplating psilocybin businesses feed us suggestions along those lines. How could time, place, and matter rules be structured to allow economically feasible, viable businesses to occur, but also be appropriately scaled so they really won't be a significant disruption or concern within neighborhoods?
Thank you. That's good feedback.
And thank you, Piper, for coming. And I do want to point out that four counties where Measure 109 did pass are actually referring opt-out measures, and that's Clackamas, Clatsup, Jackson, along with Deschutes. So we weren't the only one that made that decision. We do live in a democracy. I believe 24 counties are putting it on the ballot in numerous cities. So thank you.
Chair Adair?
Yes.
If I just may offer, we will, Peter Gakowski and the team will be coming under other items today to continue this conversation. So it, you may not see it on the agenda today, but if you'd like to tune in, the board will discuss it more this morning. That's kind of piece number one. Piece number two is, whatever the board's direction is today will just be the starting point for the, for the public hearing process. So Peter's watching now, and the team really looks forward to your participation throughout the hearing process as well. So tune in more this morning, and then please stay involved. Thank you.
Nick, do you have a sense of when that other items, item will be, will come up?
It should be this morning, actually.
It should be this morning. And thank you, Commissioner. We're not going to be able to, just given the, we were all consumed yesterday with our chief financial officer interviews. We're, if, we're going to respectfully request to pull the state of the county presentation at 10. So if the board would like to discuss that as the first other items topic this morning, we could schedule it for around 10, around 10, if that's when the board has completed the other agenda items.
It might even be a few minutes early.
It could be.
Could be.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Piper. Ryan, did you check?
Yeah, they're here for item 11.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for doing that. Let's go on then to our consent agenda.
Move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have one note. There's two periods in the other items on page eight from the July 20th meeting minutes. So it's just a full-on Scribner's item. And I want to put a special thank you out to Sharon Keith, who's our, our voice from above that's following the meeting, putting the minutes together, and leaving the county. So, you know, we've just happened to have another open position here now. But thank you very much, Sharon, for all you've done over the years with us here at Deschutes County.
And I also want to thank her husband, Ed Keith, who has been our forester, just signed his letter for 10 years. We're going to miss the team, and I wish them all the best.
Yeah. Sharon and Ed have provided tremendous service to this community during their time with Deschutes County. And I wish them all the best with their next adventures.
I know. Okay. So Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So now we are actually on item number 11. And that is with restorative justice grants. And Kathleen, is Kathleen Mihane coupon?
Oh, we heard you.
Hi there.
Good morning, Kathleen. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. How is, how are you today?
Good. It's much calmer today after yesterday.
The power came on at 7:09 this morning. It was off all night last night.
Oh, your house?
Uh huh.
Okay. Well, we had like a major cloudburst. It was amazing. So, okay, Kathleen, do you want to go ahead and lead us through this motion?
Yes. For the record, my name is Kathleen Mancoup, and I'm a management analyst for the district attorney's office. And I'm here today to request approval of the higher 1.5 for upcoming restorative justice, criminal justice grant that will expand the, I'm sorry, will fund the expansion of our emerging adult program. We're currently completing our pilot project, and we had applied for funding to implement the second phase of the initiative. And we've received notice from the Criminal Justice Commission that the review committee has recommended our proposal for, and is now just awaiting final approval from the Criminal Justice Commission Board. And so we would like to receive approval to hire the three positions, the three half-time positions to implement the program, and to make, to post those job announcements now with a statement saying that these positions wouldn't officially be hired until the grant was received and approved, to allow us the time to kind of get this project up and running, since sometimes it's taking a little longer to hire people. And this grant is specifically within the 2021 to 2023 biennium.
Kathleen, could you, could you give us a sense of how certain these, this award is at this point? I mean, is it, are we, is it just a formality that we're waiting for?
Yes, that is my understanding. It is just a formality. The commission actually had more money than grants were received. So, and there was a little bit of a delay for our project, but from sitting in on those commission meetings and the board's meetings, they were in favor of our proposal. So I do feel that it is just a formality.
So we have an existing program. We're adding one and a half FTE to that program. So we're expanding it a little bit for up to 50 young adults. Just kind of understanding the big picture here.
With, with relatively certain funding.
Yes. So we are going to be expanding. So right at the moment for our pilot, we've implemented it for 13 young people, had five graduates so far, meaning that they've completed the program requirements, and have not been subjected for any new crimes during their program participation. We had two young people that complete the program requirements, and they vote from the program. And we have six that are still participating, and we're on schedule, at least as of right now, to fit, completely finish the pilot project in December, mid-December, with every, hopefully everyone graduating. With our expanded program, we'll be expanding our criteria a little bit for who's eligible, so we can allow for up to 50 individuals. We'll also be expanding our partnerships. We'll be working more with thrive, not just for the defendants, but also the victims, and providing more case management. And we'll be handling some additional, within those 50 cases, some cases that have more complex, maybe victim situations. And we'll be working very closely with Community Solutions of Central Oregon. And they will be providing the restorative justice on those cases, which is about, probably about half of the cases out of the 50 that we will be running through the emerging adult program going forward.
And Kathleen, can you, can you remind us again of what your expectations are in terms of results or outcomes, you know, anticipated, you know, reduction in recidivism, or, you know, kind of what, what metrics are you going to use to evaluate the success of the program besides, you know, the number of people coming through?
Right. So our ultimate goal is to compare and see an improvement compared to state recidivism rates for this age group. We'd like to see about a 30% reduction in young people that go through the program in the recidivism rates for that 18 to 24-year-old range. And comparing that, not only to the state, but also to our regular county numbers, which typically are in the range, 60% of the young people recidivate at this current time.
That's a great goal. Thank you.
And so I will say that that goal, we will be watching it for a one, two, and three-year recidivism rate. But the state's official definition for recidivism is over a three-year period of time. And that's our long-term target, but we will be tracking it based upon one year and two years, we kind of move through the program.
And is this a Criminal Justice Commission, Criminal Justice Commission effort that looks like it has a runway, you know, next biennium kind of situation? Is this going to be discussed? Or is it in the policy option packages at all? Or have you heard anything about that?
There is discussion about continuing funding for restorative justice. And there is a commission and a group that's going to be kind of leading that charge. They got the initial funding, which was $4 million for this current effort that we applied, we're one of the applicants for. And they are working to continue this during the next, for the next biennium as well.
And the?
And also to touch base, oh, sorry.
Oh, go, go ahead.
With regards to our goals, long-term goals too, so from data that we had received from the courts, that this particular age group is the least likely to pay restitution. And so our hope with the program too, is to work with these young people to increase the likelihood that victims will receive restitution at the, the end of the program at a high, much higher rate than they currently do in the traditional court system.
And then from an HR perspective, it, it looks like these are, you're adding a half a DA, a half a victim assistance FTE. And these are people that, you know, assuming that the long, you know, in worst-case scenario, the long-term funding for programs such as this, you know, it does not continue in future sessions of the legislature, these are people, you know, you hire, you add a half of a DA, that is not a person that can only do the early intervention program. That's, that's a DA that can, you know, that can perform many of the functions of the DA's office. So there's, there's opportunities, you know, if, if the, if the funds to do this particular work don't continue over the long term, you can move those people into other duties within, within the DA's office.
Yes, ideally. So our, we would hire somebody who would be qualified to prosecute cases, but they would be targeted specifically on this program for the victim advocate. They could serve in any role as a victim advocate, but they'd be hired specifically with these grant funds for this project. And our program assistant would have the specialty to also serve potentially as a TA, should funding in a position opened, and they would switch over.
Great. Are all three of these halftime positions going to be recruited? Or is this going to offset some current staff?
That was my question.
These would be recruit, recruit.
Recruit, you're going to recruit somebody for halftime?
Yes.
Okay. I know a lot of positions we've had historically, such as in the health department, it's really hard to recruit halftime. So.
It, it sometimes can be. We're hopeful. I mean, I'm a halftime person, so I'm hoping, you know, my position's halftime, I, I job share with somebody else. So I think that there might be some interest in the position. I'm very hopeful that there will be in these positions. There'll also be an opportunity for some of them, for the DDA position, to be able to work remotely, or work part-time remotely for these positions, which I think will increase the interest in them as well.
Okay. Great.
But it is also part of the reason I'm here today requesting that we start the recruitment as soon as possible.
That does make sense, doesn't it? Thank you, Kathleen.
Yeah.
I guess I'd say I, given that this, this funding is almost certain, I'm supportive of moving forward with, you know, increasing these appropriations and adding these, these 3.5 FTEs at, at this point. You know, on the, on the freak chance that this grant program falls through or something like that, we've put out a position announcement, start a recruitment, and we, we don't have to, we don't have to complete it. And you can, you can have a position announcement out, you can receive applications, and then you can say, well, the funding went away, and we can't move forward with this. So I, I don't see very much risk in moving forward at this point.
Well, actually, the notification is what, next week, on the 17th. So it sounds like it's going to be, final approval will be in a week. So it's good you're starting a week early.
So the only other step here is, you know, if and when future funding doesn't come, and we have, you know, these halftime positions, that'll be an annual budget discussion. So we'll just keep an eye on the, the big picture for the office as annual funding discussions happen.
So do we have a motion?
Yeah. So with that, I would move approval of Resolution Number 2022-056, increasing appropriations within the Health Services Fund and the 2022-23 Deschutes County Budget.
I think hiring one and a half FTEs for the DA's office, that's not Health Services Fund.
Right. This is.
Oh.
Yeah. I'm like.
Next memo.
I think, yes.
Oh.
Number 11 memo.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm still on the consent agenda.
Yep.
Yes.
That is my bad.
It's okay. It made sure that we were paying attention.
Uh huh.
It's just.
All right. Move to approve the hiring of 1.5 FTEs upon the acceptance of the 2021 Criminal Justice Commission Restorative Justice Grant Program.
And I will second it.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you, Kathleen, and thank you for reminding us that you, you share your job. So maybe there are more people out there that would be interested in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have a great day.
You too. Thank you. Now, we have the second reading of ordinance number 2022-008.
Yes, Commissioners, good morning. Dave Givens, County Internal Auditor, here to furor availability for the ordinance 2022-008 regarding amendments to county code for the County Internal Auditor and County Audit Committee. So these are, I'd say, almost like housekeeping amendments, because they came out of the Audit Committee's routine two-year cycle of reviewing our county code for, for these two areas, and had some fairly, you know, I'd say minor changes. And so this is the second reading. And any questions at this point?
So no changes between the first and second reading?
No.
Just that, yeah. So, yep, we reviewed this last time, and I'm supportive. Basically, we're, the Office of Internal Audit, just, it was just kind of the terminology is changing a little bit, but the function is very much the same.
I, you know, the discussion at the prior meeting about the relatively minor nature of these changes, I'm completely comfortable with that and ready to move forward.
Okay. So we need to have a motion for the second reading of the ordinance, and then a motion for the approval.
I'll move second reading of ordinance number 2022-008 by title only. Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes on approval of ordinance number 2022-008, and ordinance by, entitled only, of course, and ordinance amending Chapter 2.14, County Internal Auditor, and amending Chapter 2.15 Audit Committee of the Deschutes County Code. So then we'll need an approval of the ordinance.
Motion for adoption, technically.
Yes. Thank you.
I'll move adoption of ordinance number 2022-008.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, approval of ordinance number 2022-008.
I saw Aaron out at the county breakfast too, this last Saturday or Sunday. Saw Aaron out at the county breakfast too this last Saturday or Sunday, whichever morning it was.
Breakfast?
Yep. So lots of good times getting, getting out there and seeing each other, out of the office even. So have a good day.
Thank you.
So thank you, Dave. We're now on item number 13, Oregon Living with Fire, and I believe that Jen would like to be added. Ryan, did you get that motion? What? She needed the, to be added, Jennifer Fenton on Zoom to send her in the invite list. I did forward that email to Sharon, so hopefully she got something. You don't, okay, will you be Sharon at her? First of all, happy belated birthday.
Thank you. Smokey and I actually shared that day. Did you know that?
Who's that?
Smokey Bear.
Oh, there you go.
He was, what was he, 78?
Yes.
Yes, he was 78 yesterday.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little younger, so.
Yes, you are. So congratulations for sharing that with Smokey.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, and for the record, Joe Stutler, Deschutes County Senior Advisor. I know that Jennifer is actually watching the video, who is one of our co-coordinators. Jody Birm is actually on a fire on the Willamette and Umpqua, and we expect her home on Thursday. So thanks for the time today. I just, a few, few things. This is actually, we're very close to the, the one-year anniversary of having agreements in place and bringing Oregon Living with Fire back up to speed. And so as part of that, there's a requirement in the governance which establishes Oregon Living with Fire for updates approximately every six months with the four counties that are signatured to the agreement. We've hit Creve, Jefferson, and Clamath, and Deschutes County, this was the last one. So we've been able to update the Commissioners on all four counties at this point. In your packet today, you've got a couple of things. One is just kind of an accounting of the work that's, that has, that has been accomplished, specifically in the program of work, and then specifically in the effort of, of grant writing. And, you know, one of the things that surfaced by all four counties when we started bringing this back was adding capacity to the things that are going on here in, in central Oregon within the landscape of Oregon Living with Fire. And so certainly not going to go through everything, I just want to highlight that, that capacity and some very recent developments that happened, actually last week, that came in after we put the agenda request. But so in your packet was the, if you will, the final program of work for 2022. The Steering Committee has approved this. Commissioner DeBonne is on that Steering Committee. We're working on a 2023 program of work. Our Steering Committee will approve that in our next, next meeting. And so, and again, I want to highlight the, the capacity being added. So Jennifer, I see her now on the screen, is very skilled in grant writing. So you'll take a look at the grants that Jennifer put together with ODF and other partners in this, you know, this particular spring. And that's certainly added capacity to ODF, and then there was one that put together rural business development for Walker Range. And we're hoping to hear the results of all of that, and we're able to add capacity with doing that. Just a few other things. Jody has been really busy. She's now the Chair of the Outreach Committee for the Deschutes Collaborative. In addition, we continue to participate with the Fire Dapids Communities Learning Network, sharing successes and of what's going on in central Oregon in terms of implementing the Cohesive Strategy. To that end, we've had a couple of sessions. One was a cross-boundary collaboration meeting that I'm pretty sure Commissioner, I know Commissioner Chang was there, I think Commissioner DeBonne was part of that February 2nd. It was a cross-boundary collaboration, and we brought Rick Stratton in with the Forest Service that shared risk assessment for our landscape that said, if you only had $1, where would you invest those dollars? And so we had additional funding from 762 and certainly the infrastructure. So that was most helpful. If you take a look at where implementation is occurring within our landscape, that risk assessment was, was a big step. And then certainly on June 2nd, this is probably, gosh, at least the 10th, 10th year that we've had of, we used to call them fire seasons. We call them fire your updates now. That was at the fairgrounds. I know a couple of the Commissioners were, were present at that. Unfortunately, I was in Tallis, New Mexico, in a fire for about 25 days, so missed that. But I hear great reports on, on that particular meeting. Jody is also now the Secretary of the Central Oregon Fire Chief Association, adding capacity to that organization. And then I suspect some of you are on the mailing list that we get the, sometimes three and four daily updates on fire situation in central Oregon from Central Oregon Interagency Dispatch. By the way, we had over 100 new starts yesterday from, from the lightning, all of them quarter acre or less, except for one by John Day. Anyway, Jody has been filling in, sitting in on the public information desk there, updating that and giving other agency people a break when we really get busy. I think some of you were probably present at the City Club presentation, Living with Fire. Jody was a guest speaker along with others at that. And then we have a, our, it's a national and international Cohesive Strategy Workshop. This is the fifth one. I'm the Chair of that particular effort. It'll be in Asheville, North Carolina. Oregon Living with Fire will be a feature of that particular workshop. It's the second week in, in November in Asheville, North Carolina. So we're really pleased with those accomplishments. It's more than just attending meetings. It's actually helping people be successful with implementation. I do want to highlight two other things. We, we've talked about this a number of times, and we missed the opportunity because of timing last year with FEMA's brick grants, building, building resiliency in communities. So we have three solid proposals that we're going to be working with those stakeholders. The first one, some of you are familiar with the Core Three Project, where the, I think the county received about $9 million to move that forward. The remaining balance for Phase One, we're going to be running at that with, with the brick application. It's about another 11 million there. High Desert Museum, we've been working with them to get Heart of Oregon to actually do defensible space work around that property, but they're very interested in a water storage sprinkler, sensor-activated protection device. So we're working with the folks there for that application. And then a week from tomorrow, actually going to Primeville. Primeville and Creve County, they're interested in a combination biochar, biomass facility. And if that goes, then we'll have three viable applications, I think. And as we get more details of that, talk with our county administrator about the process for that, and we'll update the board as we know more of that. The other one that, the last one that literally just came in at the end of last week that I'm really excited about, I had a chance to meet with the, the new owners of Interfor. Nineveh Brothers and out of Wyoming, the two forest supervisors from the Deschutes, and Fremont-Wainema about adding capacity to the mill. Because of the infrastructure language, we think that meeting went really well. In addition to that, there's a new player in town, a company that would have a facility at Interfor that would take everything else that wasn't merchantable material, convert it with recycled plastics, and make fireproof, fire-resistant material. And so that project is going along really well, and I'm excited about the report that just happened. And we've got that solid connection both with the new company and certainly with Nineveh Brothers. And if that happens, if you think about, we've got a piece of wood that has value, and we've known for a long time that there will never be enough money in the budget to treat the fuels, but if we have, but we know there's enough money in the economy. So we can make pavers, building materials, siding, decking, that sort of stuff that sells. We've got an answer to that, that issue. So anyway, really excited about, about that. So that's the highlights of Oregon Living with Fire, what we've been working on for a year. And we have another year on the existing agreements with the other counties and the Forest Service. The budget is solid with that, and we extended the contracts for the two co-coordinators, and we're excited about what it looks like in the future. That's why that opened up for any questions you got.
So a couple thoughts. This is cohesive strategy from the highest level federal government. This is that bridge between our local efforts and the federal government. I'm just kind of putting it in context. As a county commissioner, we know we do Project Wildfire. We try to just explain, educate, and outreach all year long for defensible space and fire resiliency. But this really is bringing it to the next level, coordinating multiple counties, regions, and being that bridge of information and best practices to the federal level and at the national, you know, sharing forum. So just showing some excitement for this. It's just, we're all kind of stumbling around nationally, trying to figure out, you know, is it climate change? Is it overgrowth in the forest? Is it the aggressive putting out fire, forest fires? Is it human development? And it's all of that, of course, but we've got to deal with it. So, you know, thank you very much. I'm excited to be part of it. Couple thoughts. Interfor, that's exciting, you know, news to hear about. You know, what, what is the big opportunity there? We've known for a long time that we can chip up non-marchinable timber and have truckloads of chips, either, you know, nice white chips for, for paper, or just biomass all day, every day. So what are we going to do with that? So we're just going to keep trying, learning, and sharing at that point. A fun thought is, what about wooden bridge segments? Somebody mentioned, so this is just jumping way off here for you to another big idea. Somebody mentioned that a wooden span is going to be seven times lighter than concrete. We just happened to have a bridge that was sinking in the soil in southern Deschutes County. So just putting out a word for that, you know, and it's been done in some places around the world. And, you know, even if it's a wooden segment, they say that the big timber, mass timber buildings, the wood will char, but it doesn't just start like a campfire, because it is, it's just a solid mass, so.
Yeah. Laminated timber certainly is, there's a lot of energy going into that, this product. Because of the compression, it won't burn. And obviously.
It'll char, but yeah, it won't start like a fire.
It won't even, it won't even char.
Well, okay. So you're talking about the next product?
The next, the next product, yeah, the next product. And so obviously, the railroad industry is very interested in railroad ties, because you spend half the day putting them in, and the rest, the, the next part of the day, putting out the fires. So, yeah, a pretty incredible market out there. Yeah. But thank you.
I would like to say that Neiman Industries, that is in Goldcrest, I was actually trying to get funding through Connect Oregon for them to do the Burlington Northern upgrade so that we could take 600 freight trucks off of Highway 97. Unfortunately, that funding didn't fall to that group, but it's such a great company. You know, a lot of people from Deschutes County work there, family wage jobs, and it is, I, I'm not giving up on that. So you haven't heard anything that they've gotten that funding to upgrade Burlington Northern, have you, Joe?
I appreciate that. I actually had a chance to meet the owner last week, and great gentleman. And turns out, we have mutual friends in Wyoming, so that was a good, good start on that relationship, so.
I actually was like the first, first county commissioner that went and met them like a year or two ago. Whenever they got here, I went down what they have mills in Colorado, South Dakota, and Wyoming. And yes, we do have, I had some connections with, I believe his son lives in South Dakota. So it was, yeah, it's, I'm really happy that they're there doing what they're doing. But one of the meetings that you just mentioned that we were at, they actually, you remember what happened in Boulder last winter, when they had the fire that whipped through, because the houses were all so close together?
Yes.
And they couldn't get it stopped. So I know those comments were made by several firemen at the meeting we were at, when you've always got to look at your building and what you're doing. You know, we're always concerned with, okay, don't let the trees go over the building, you know, your home, and all these other things. But, you know, Boulder, I think, really brought another fact in when you've got it, when you have the winds going. So it's.
Yeah, those wind events is pretty tough.
Right.
Obviously, that was structure-to-structure ignition, and because of the density. And unfortunately, we haven't seen the last of those, so.
I know. And then the other thing, I want to remind the community that we do have grant funding up to 200, it's a $250,000 grant for juniper removal, if you have property next to BLM. So that's something that Nathan Garabee is going to be handling, I believe, next month, September. And I'm really excited about that, because if you look at pictures of central Oregon, 100 years ago, there weren't very many juniper trees. And they would suck 30 to 50 gallons a day, you know, the big trees. And pulling roots is, when it's like an inch or two tall, the root can be like 14, 16, 18 inches long. Because I, I just pulled some the other day, and it's, it's really frightening when you think about what the water they use when we only get 11 inches of rain annually here.
They're certainly adaptive to the environment, that's for sure, so.
Yes. Very adaptive. So, and they're, you know, they're using a lot of our moisture.
Yeah, you bet. So.
I'm, I'm really glad to hear that Neiman Enterprises is excited about the infrastructure bill investments that are going to be going into the Deschutes National Forest. I think that's an incredible opportunity for us to get a lot of good work done in the forest, but it's also going to be a significant opportunity to, to scale up fiber production for industry. And I would like to track closely the, the developments there, the, the development of new products in new markets, proceeding with that. And it, that actually, the composite operation you described, it gets to one of my big concerns recently, which is, what do we do with, what do we do with non-saw, non, non-chip log material? We are going to see the implementation of SB 762 rolling out over the next couple of years, which will, I believe, result in a whole lot more defensible space treatments occurring across the landscape on, in the, in the private residential property space than we are currently seeing. And we know that with what we're currently seeing, we're overwhelming our compost facility. We are putting thousands and thousands of tons, or tens of thousands of tons, of material unchipped directly into the landfill, and filling up our precious landfill space. So it's, I'm so happy that those defensible space treatments are occurring, but, you know, we, we need to figure out what to do with the, the material that flows out of those treatments. And we need to do a better job of disposing of it in a more compact, space-efficient fashion. So I, that is one thing I wanted to ask about was, I, I've heard, you, you mentioned a number of Oregon Living with Fire initiatives that touched the, you know, kind of biomass, or, you know, these composite materials type opportunities. But, but besides new market development, which, you know, it has, I, I've studied that stuff for years. I know that there's, there's some opportunities, but it's, it's not, that, you know, the fundamental problem is that it costs so much to, to grind and, and move material to where someone can use it for a product, that it makes many, many market opportunities unviable. So if we're going to have all this material, and it's going to be taking up large amounts of space in our, our current landfill or our new landfill, I'd like to get more serious about what we can do to dispose of this material in a cost-effective, environmentally sustainable way that doesn't, that doesn't have such an impact on our solid waste operations.
I agree. I agree. It's the, the defensible space, it's the problem, our solution causes.
Yeah.
We solve one, but then we have a bigger thing. And, and the whole notion with the Cohesive Strategy is, we're not going to burn our way out of it, and we're not going to cut our way out of it, and we still have communities to protect. So you got to focus on all three of them simultaneously to make a difference, you know, in the, in the wild land fire trajectory. And so, and I think what, what I see, I've never seen more opportunities for innovation, technology, utilization, that sort of stuff in terms of funding available. And then certainly, you know, private investment. We, and again, I restate this, we knew. you know, private investment. We, and again, I restate this, we knew as soon as we were able to take advantage of that material and take advantage of the economy versus the budget, we had a winner. And there's a bunch of stuff that's coming online with that now, so just proud to be part of it, so.
Well, and, and so along those lines, can you, can you, can you talk about like how Oregon Living With Fire will approach that issue of, of essentially waste disposal? And then what, what kind of value added you think the program can provide?
Well, I think the, you know, the, the value is, the reason the new company showed up at the meeting last week is because of the connection that I had with that person and that company. And so, that connection of connecting the folks like Newman with the new company and merging that together, you know, conceivable, and so, for example, you talk about the, the transportation costs. There's a number of companies that are looking at actually doing the work right there on site, so it doesn't have to be hauled anywhere, which is the transportation cost. If these kinds of things happen, we could be setting something up at not landfill and disposing a thing onsite. So, there's, it's already, already there. So, those are things we're looking at, Commissioner, and, and I don't have any, you know, more specifics right now than, and because some of this stuff, there's obviously some intellectual property that folks are waiting to see the, see where the money is before they, you know, tip their hands with some of this stuff. And I don't, certainly don't blame them for that. But, anyway, that's, that's the value I see of those connections of, with the new technology, the new equipment, the partnerships, the relationships, that sort of stuff. And so, that's the value we bring, I think, to the table, so.
And, and so, this, this, this composite material enterprise, do you picture that actually drawing additional non-saw material into, that, and it, they're not calling it Interfor anymore. They're calling it Gilchrist Forest Products, is that, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Do you picture that drawing more non-saw material into Gilchrist Forest Products? Or do you picture that, you know, making better use of, of mill residue?
I think it's both. And I think it's, we're treating this stuff onsite, for example, rather than, you know, going through all the, you know, the, the transportation costs and moving it from the woods. If you can treat it there with the technology and treat it at the facility where the stuff has already been hauled in, in other words, you bring in, you know, a truckload of stuff, there's a, a bunch of stuff that does not get used. But treating it there, treating it on the ground, that, treating it at landfills, that sort of stuff where you have that extra stuff, having the technology portable enough to treat it there and produce a product right there. So, the only haul is the product once it's produced.
So, do you, do you think they can actually make this composite material in mobile operations, not located at the mill?
Absolutely.
That's very interesting.
Yes, it is. Yeah, very interesting. Yeah, you bet, so.
Joe, was Jen going to add anything to the comments today?
She is most welcome to, Jen. I asked her to be on so she could listen. She's been to all the commissioner meetings and, and been certainly value-added. We're finding the, the two co-coordinators working out really well with different sets of skill sets. So, Jen, if you have something to add, you'd be welcome to.
Do you see anything, Ryan, is she raising her hand?
I just want to let you guys know, I am actually going to be attending several different webinars for upcoming grant opportunities that Joe already explained, but there's one specific one that just came out today that I'm going to, is the Community Wildfire Defense Grants. And so, hopefully, I'll have something to report back as far as, you know, the how and what for's, and how to apply for that if you're interested. But, Living With Fire, I mean, that's, that's where I live. So, I'm hoping that I can add as much capacity as possible, whether research or writing or just anything that's going on for any of the counties that I support. So, I appreciate the opportunity to work with Joe and Jody to, to do this because academically, that's where I live.
Who's offering that grant that you just mentioned?
It is the USDA Forest Service.
Great. Well, thanks for being up on all that.
And if you see anything about juniper removal, would you send it to me, please? Or, I don't know.
Send it to the world.
Yes, we, we need to actually find more juniper removal grants. So, Jen, I appreciate that. Till we get our next forester.
I'm more the person that fits the, the project to the grant rather than the grant fit the project. So, I'm always, I've always got my eyes open for stuff like that.
Oh, I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much. Sorry.
Thanks for having me this morning.
One of the, one of the last things I would say is that we, we are, unfortunately, you know, I'm, I'm standing to report that we, we will be looking for a new county forester soon. Or, you know, I've also suggested that we might consider revising the title for that position to, to reflect the emphasis on community wildfire protection or fuels reduction work or something like that. But, there, I, I, I think that there are probably opportunities to optimize the relationship between Oregon Living With Fire and the, and the commu, the county forester role. And it would be great to hear from the Oregon Living With Fire program about, you know, suggestions or opportunities to do that, ideas, you know, as we go into this recruitment and, you know, we started the recruitment, but as we go into this, into this hiring and selection process.
Okay, thank you. I'll be happy to work with our county administrator on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome. Thanks for your time today.
Happy birthday again to you and Smokey.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe Eric?
Commissioners, Eric will step in and just here he comes. We've got him in the hall right now. He's stepping back and forth between interviews, watching the board meeting. So, here he is.
Okay.
Amazing.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome. For the record, Erica Crop, I'm here this morning as the county's risk manager. The item before you is board approval to pay an invoice that is higher than the county administrator signature authority, which is, of course, $150,000. As background, we purchase general liability insurance and cyber liability insurance through a group called OPEP. OPEP is the Oregon Public Entity Excess Pool. So, Deschutes County along with Washington County, Clackamas County, and CIS. CIS is City-City Insurance Services. So, those entities together go out and purchase insurance. We're able to leverage our purchasing power because of, of that large group. And through OPEP, we purchase excess liability insurance and cyber. The cost for the excess liability insurance is $121,000. The cost for cyber is $30,000. So, when you add those together, we're just slightly over $150,000, which, which requires board approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, I know, Eric, I remember you saying that the cyber went up. Was it like $15,000 last year? Or, I'm just, I was curious.
Yeah, last, last year, the cyber was 20, just under $27,000.
Oh, so it didn't jump up that much?
So, it went up about $4,000.
Okay.
So, $121,000 for excess general liability. So, general liability of the operations of Deschutes County. We have our big pool, and if something big happens when we break out of a claim number.
Yeah, the excess general liability covers claims for over $1 million and up to $10 million. We are self-insured for any claim under $1 million. But, if a claim grows and hits that over a million and up to $10 million, then our excess general liability kicks in.
And would we schedule this in the future through our budget or start doing this every year? Or is this just because it was 100 bigger?
It's just because it went over $150,000. You know, the, the funds to pay for this are part of the budget process. And in fact, I, I tried to get, this is two different insurance policies, and it's, we could have, if, if OPEP would have given us two separate invoices, we would have been fine. And I checked with legal and finance.
It's good to shed a little light on what we're doing here. It's not bad.
Yes. So, so I, I tried to get OPEP to give us two separate invoices. I checked with legal and finance. That would have been acceptable, but OPEP would not, would not do that. So, that's why we're here today. And that's why we haven't done this in the past.
And it's good to know that, I mean, cybersecurity is serious business. You know, the moment that something gets encrypted and out of our control is going to be a bad day. And it has happened in the state of Oregon. But it's, and it's up to each one of us just in our tools at our desktop to be just prudent and careful about what we're clicking on.
Yeah, and part of the purchasing, the cyber policy is we have to fill out an application that talks about our current practices. And the insurers require certain things like, like the multi-factor authen, authen, I can't even say that word, but the-
Authentication.
Authen, yeah. So, at home, if you're logging on and you have to go to your, your iPhone to put in a code, that's all protection for the county and, and is required by our insurer, the insurance carrier.
So, it sounds like this has been standard billing practices. So, how much was the general, excess general liability insurance the year before then?
Last year, it was the same.
It was the same. Okay, so just the one jumping up pushed it over the 150, then?
Yeah, when you add last year's amount, it's like $148,000. And then, with the increase, it kicked us to 152.
Okay. Well, that's good to know that that one didn't jump up. When you consider today's world, you would have expected it to.
Yeah, part of it's kind of the purchasing pool.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion?
I'd just say that Eric, insurance is that thing that most people don't want to think about until they need it. So, thank you for making sure we're covered and paying attention to this every day.
You're welcome.
At risk. I move approval of, approval of the deputy county administrator, risk manager to pay the OPEP invoice in the amount of $152,154 for excess general liability and excess cyber liability insurances.
Now, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
For that. Just to remind people, I think Chief Grant said on the news the other day, please, don't leave things in your car, lock your cars, take your mail out, don't leave your mail in your mailboxes. Those kind of crimes are happening more and more. So, it will help keep your personal rates down. When you hear about people losing their car because they've left it running with the keys in it, that's a little, it's a little, makes it for interesting when you have everything in your car. So, now, we're going to skip with item number 15. We'll come back to that on Monday. And we will go to other items. And I believe the first other item will probably be Measure 109. Do we want to do that one first?
Psilocybin.
Yes, psilocybin. Good morning, Tanya.
Thanks for having us. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner, Community Development. I have with me Peter Kautowski, Community Development Director. We are coming back after presenting to the board on Monday about Measure 109, Time, Place, and Manner Regulations. We, options, options for moving forward. The memo, excuse me, that staff presented on Monday, presented three different options ranging from less restrictive to more restrictive. I think the, the discussion was great. We kind of talked about a lot of issues that are going to kind of bubble up through this process. I found that very helpful as staff. Consultation with legal and discussions amongst ourselves, staff, we would like to recommend proceeding with the first option, which is the, the most restrictive option. And, and we have some reasons for that. And this is, again, just a staff, staff thoughts the board can choose to do, however the board would like to go. But, given all the background that we've given before about how, about the timeframe and, and the kind of limitations on what we know, we believe that it's, it's, it's hard to make meaningful time, place, and manner regulations when we don't know the shape of what we're actually regulating yet. So, there are still holes in that, what that industry might look like, what service centers might look like, et cetera. And we've had a lot of great input from the industry, some of it today, saying, you know, that they, they really want to be a part of this conversation. And as I acknowledged the other day, in a perfect world, we would have time to have work groups and sessions and all of that. And I think then we would really be able to drill down into those regulations. But alas, we don't. So, I think that the way, by starting with this option one, this most restrictive, that allows us to kind of start at the basic foundation and then allow, allow the public process, the hearings process through the planning commission, as well as through the board, allow through that process, industry representatives, other stakeholders, the public, et cetera, to tell us what they actually want, instead of us kind of guessing a little bit or assuming and building something, but maybe having to unbuild it a little bit. So, starting at that baseline to have that sound foundation and then relying on input from, from the public, from the industry, to be able to kind of finesse it and tell us what they want, because we don't know what they want. And that's, that's kind of our strategy, our thoughts behind, behind recommending that option. That was kind of-
Thank you very much for the recommendation and, and the justification. Also, for the service center options, they're basically all the same, right? And all three-
That's correct for all the options.
And that's, that's the meat of the story right there, probably.
Right. I mean, I think that's, yeah, as discussed, you know, whether that issue is colocation, whether that, with, with production or other aspects, the size, you know, us picking kind of relatively arbitrary kind of regulations without the input of, of the industry or others wouldn't necessarily get to the best or the most reasonable regulation. So, we do want to hear from the industry. We don't have the time to do work groups. So, we think that kind of starting a, the kind of lowest, sorry, the most restrictive, excuse me, and then allowing them to say, but wait a minute, we, we would also like this, or we would like this. Allowing that to be built from the bottom up would be the kind of the most strategic way to proceed. I don't know if Peter or legal counsel has, or will, hi, well, has any additional kind of finesse to that conversation, but I welcome that.
That would be great to hear. I know even the word reasonable brings up a great debate. So, yes.
That's correct.
And we know how youth activity center works, so if reasonable is that way, yes, great.
I'd just like to, you know, before we get into this, I'd just like to say that I have witnessed many public agency planning processes where the first proposal out of the gate is basically what ends up happening. And I, I appreciate CDD's statements of a desire to engage with, you know, with the, the business community that are interested in these businesses. But I, it doesn't, you know, having seen a number of processes, you know, public agency planning processes where the, the proposal that they put out is, is what ends up happening and that, and where public input actually doesn't matter very much, I am concerned about that potential with this, with this set of time, place, and manner rules. I really, I don't think that a set of time, place, and manner rules that don't provide opportunities for colocation of production and service centers is going to, is going to work. And what we're doing with this, this set of draft TPM rules is we are trying to prepare for the scenario where, you know, we already have a measure on the ballot for November. We are trying to prepare for the scenario where the people of Deschutes County say that they want access to psilocybin services. And so, to come out with an initial proposal that essentially does not make that access possible, doesn't make sense to me. So, I, I, you know, I, I think that if, if what we're doing is preparing for, you know, preparing for the scenario where the, the people of Deschutes County say they want access to these services, that we should come into this process with that mind frame as opposed to coming in with a, a highly restrictive initial proposal as a starting point.
So, yeah, let me just, I would like to know more. You know, it sounds like you already have it worked out, but I don't- You know, it sounds like you already have it worked out, but I don't. It's how, what we heard during a public testimony was somebody's garage growing a, a, you know, product in eight-week cycles is going to create enough product for the region, one. So I, you're, you're referring to a scenario that I don't understand. I mean, is it, is it real, is it really viable to have a, that small production in, in a facility? Is it cost-effective? Or is it going to be more cost-effective just to be able to buy the product in a controlled environment that the state defines for transferring it between the grower and the, in the facility? I don't know this information, you know, and you're speaking like you have a real clear vision on it. Please explain, or, or have industry explain it to me. I mean, I'm just saying.
You've had several months to have discussions with industry stakeholders who are interested in these facilities. During that time, like, you know, I have spoken to enough people that I, the.
Oh, but, but not generically, specifically, you know.
The most real viable business planned, you know, complete, completed business plan proposal that I have heard about in, in our community is seeking a co-located facility.
So nobody's come to me and said that?
I, I disagree.
Well, I'm just, that's the information I have. We're not, we don't need to.
I know who has spoken with all three of us and I know that what, what they have, have shared. So I, I don't think you can say that you haven't heard about this proposal.
I would really like to hear from county legal, if that would be fine at this moment.
Thank you. For the record, Stephanie Marshall, assistant legal counsel for Deschutes County. And thank you, everybody, for asking the questions and helping us with this process. You know, there's, there's several things that come to mind when I think about adoption of new regulations. The first is that we don't want to enact regulations that are arbitrary and capricious. And they could be arbitrary without input of the facts, you know, as the basis for why we're regulating the way we are. And so that might lead some to believe that, you know, we should go with the most liberal, opening the door. But then that runs afoul of some other issues, which would be, you know, we, we open the door to as many applicants as possible and then we want to ratchet it back based on information that we bring in. Now, we've got non-conforming uses and people complaining about vested rights and goalpost rules and, and all of that. You know, so, so from my perspective, having been a land use attorney in both Washington State and Oregon for many years and, and challenging, to be honest, regulations that have been adopted, the more information that we can have, you know, a cautious, you know, let's not just open it all up approach, you know, that's, that's what we've been talking about, legal and CDD, just to provide the most protection for the county. And not only with respect to the landowners that, that are going to want to put in applications, but for the patients that will be attending these facilities as well. You know, I think we have to think about that, all, all the potentially impacted folks, not just the, the people that are going to be developing and producing. But I'll, I'll turn it over to Peter. Here you go.
Thank you.
Unless you have any other questions for me.
Well, I'll just acknowledge, I mean, I, I like the recommendation, start with, you know, the most tangible, most, most well-known, you know, compatible to existing code and then go from there. I mean, that, that does sound like a real good path. So I'm just acknowledging that.
Chair, Derek, can I just ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
Based on that, and this is also just for legal. If, if the initial proposal is noticed for the most restrictive with just these zones, if through the public hearing process, an additional zone is proposed or scale a zone, does the notice have, does it have to be re-noticed? Because I know just in, in prior years, as we've done a, a major amendment to an existing text amendment, we've had to re-notice it. I'm just curious about any notification issues that could come up if there is a significant change to whatever we initially propose. I just.
Great.
Nice question.
I would say yes, it would have to be re-noticed, you know, and that's, and thank you for bringing that up. You know, I mean, that's, there, there are, there are positives and negatives for, for being cautious and, and waiting in, you know, on a more limited basis and, and the procedure and, and notice requirements. You know, if it's expanded out, you know, that, that could be seen as a, you know, more process, more, more cost, more time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Peter Katuski, community development director. I just wanted to acknowledge that regardless as to whether or not the board decided, decided to, to opt out and put the matter before the voters at the general election on November 8th, our approach would have been the same. We've talked about this over several meetings. There, there, when we got wind of the psilocybin program, happened in late spring, didn't even make the work program, as you recall. It was, it was imperative that, in coordination with county council, we had the conversation with the board about what it meant to opt out and those tight timelines to, to, to work with Steve Dennison and the county clerk's office. And, and so with that, with that, that limited or really precluded our ability to convene a working group, to convene stakeholders, to understand the industry as it's emerging. And as we've talked about repeatedly, the rules advisory committees that are being established with the Oregon Health Authority are still working and promulgating rules that need to be adopted by the end of the calendar year. And so for staff to, to, even with the best of intentions, as noted by Commissioner Chang, just kind of try to figure out how to scale or co-locate, for us to offer amendments would be completely arbitrary. We would, we would, we would be, I, I mean, it's not even a guess. We would be just, you know, coming up with some concepts. And the sensitivity in measure 109 about having reasonable, which isn't defined, time, place, and manner amendments, that's why we, it compelled us to start conservatively based on similar uses, whether they're medical or, or have a commercial activity, and we're talking about the service centers and where psilocybin can be grown, it's recognized to be grown in, under the law. In exclusive farming zone, we, we found that that was the most justifiable approach that we could begin developing findings. But that does not mean, just again, to emphasize, that over the course of the public process, as we hear testimony and evidence from the industry, that that can't substantiate why we need to amend the code. And ultimately, to the extent that, to Nick's questions about re-noticing, I've always found that if the amendment is, if you haven't gone beyond the intent of the amendment, you can make an argument, I'm not saying it's dispositive, that the, the notice that you sent to the state, the notice for the public, it's still within the context of the amendment. But if you went out and we started, you know, adding other facets to this amendment that got outside of psilocybin or were far more, and I'm not trying to put words in, in Stephanie Marshall's, you know, mouth or, or context, but if, if we went beyond the scope of the project, we could find ourselves in procedural vulnerability. I guess we'll know, you know, we need to hear the testimony. We need to, you know, I think, welcome the planning commission's process and, and recommendations. And certainly as we get closer to the Board of County Commissioners, to the extent that there are some very, you know, assertive proposals to broaden the scope of, of what was initially proposed, that's, I think, when we would lean on legal counsel and ask, you know, do we need to modify the 35-day notice? Do we need to broaden the notice of public hearing that occurs before the Board of County Commissioners to ensure that we're not fouling or poisoning the process? But hopefully that's, that's helpful. Because again, we're, from CDD standpoint, we are truly not playing, trying to, to unfairly put our weight on a scale to affect the psilocybin industry. It really just starts with, with all those factors that I've summarized thus far and what we've been talking about over the course of the last several weeks.
Peter, I appreciate you laying out that process. But I mean, let, let's just look at how this issue has proceeded within the county so far and how responsive we've been to public input and testimony. We said we wanted to consider putting an opt-out ballot measure on the November ballot. We said we should talk to the public about that and, and hear what they think. We heard from 80 people, almost 90% of which were opposed to putting an opt-out measure on the ballot. And what did we do? We voted two to one to put an opt-out measure on the ballot. So that doesn't give me a whole lot of faith that the people of Deschutes County expressing their preferences and will is respected within this county organization. So I, I, I just have real concerns about starting this process with a highly restrictive, unworkable set of time, place, and manner rules as a, as a, as a starting point. Because we could hear, you know, we could hear from 90% of the, the community on, on these draft rules that they need to be changed and modified. And people could, could come up with very reasonable, very technically and professionally informed recommendations, and they could just be completely ignored. And I, you know, I, I'll, you know, I'll direct those comments primarily at my fellow commissioners to say, you know, I have no faith that we will take public input on these draft time, place, and manner rules seriously. And these are the, we are putting in place the package to play out the scenario where the majority of Deschutes County voters say they want psilocybin access. We are not, and, and so I, I think that at this point, these time, place, and manner rules, we should take a different perspective than if we didn't pursue the opt-out ballot measure. Because this is, this is the contingency, this is the scenario we are putting in place for if the people of Deschutes County say they want access to these services.
As, thank you for those comments, Commissioner Chang. As someone who does live in the rural community, I really appreciate starting at the most restrictive. And you can always go from there, but if you start out letting everything go, it's really hard to pull it back. As someone who ran for office because of what was happening in our rural community, the fact that 19 of the 24 precincts in rural Deschutes County voted no. You'll notice on the list of cities that have opted, that are putting the opt-out on their ballot, Bend isn't putting it on the ballot, actually even Redmond isn't. None of the cities in Deschutes County are putting it on the ballot. But it's, it's, you know, it's not like people cannot get it in Deschutes County at a later date unless they're added to the list. But it's, it's a relatively small list of cities. And with cities, I feel that you have different areas of the city where you could do the operation, especially if you're only talking about doing something that needs 500 square feet and a center. And in the county, none of the facilities we have can be overnight. And I think a lot of people that are in the industry really want to offer a whole experience. So I'm, I'm, I'm very comfortable with starting restrictive. Want to listen to people, but I see what's available. And if, if really what Ryan said was we only need 500 square feet to grow enough psilocybin mushrooms for Deschutes County, you know, I just have to feel that we're starting out conservative and, you know, very safe. And we can, we can go from there. It's much easier to go that way than to go the other.
And I would just say that we could start with a very conservative approach. That's scale-based as opposed to zone-based. And that would be a whole nother, a whole nother way to approach this topic and to come up with adequate protections for all of the concerns that people have about these facilities.
And I do want to thank Peter for saying that even if we had not voted to put it out, see opt-out, your recommendations would not have been different. So I, thank you for bringing that point up, Peter. And Commissioner DeBonne?
Let's talk, I mean, scale-based is taking the whole kind of matrix and putting it on its side, I think. I'm just trying to understand what you're saying there. But I don't even think we have that opportunity. I mean, scale-based on EFU, MUA 10, production and service centers, is that what you're referring to? And there's no path to a service center in an EFU parcel.
I, I think we heard that there, there is a path. It is a cumbersome path. And it is a cumbersome path that we don't want to undertake if we don't know whether people want to do this. Because now we have an opt-out measure on the ballot. And because there could be, you know, it could be a substantially, you know, it could be a contentious process. But the way to control for it being a contentious process is by making these facilities so small that people take a look at it and say like, oh, I'm not worried about that. So I, I, again, I just think that we are, we could be.
When you say small, what are you, what are you envisioning?
I mean, we have heard, we've heard how small a planned business is, is going to be. And we could, we could work off of that. We could buffer it a little bit and, and say, we only want to see facilities this big.
And so this is where I started.
And if we did that.
Scenario concept, a piece of paper says five acre, no, 50, 80 acre EFU parcel, farming operations, hay is going to be grown, there's a residence on the property. That resident, they'll have a room that authorizes service center with a therapist. So one room, one therapist, closet full of mushrooms. I mean, is that a scenario you're talking about?
I mean, I, I think it's possible. We really should do, we should have the discussions with the industry early in this process.
Well, and we're going to hear.
I would prefer for us to do that before we put out a set of draft time, place, and manner, you know, a draft time, place, and manner approach. Because again, I'm highly skeptical that, you know, based on our recent performance in relation to this issue, that, that public testimony is going to be honored and, and utilized.
Yeah, just trying to understand more. For clarity though, I definitely support, you know, using this option one as a known starting point, especially acknowledging that the, the, the use for that service center is the same in all three scenarios. So let's start working through that.
You did memorialize this in a vote, Dave?
I think you have adequate direction. I mean, there's going to be more final action that would come forward. So is this just a beginning point? No need for a motion?
And I'm open for conversation here too. I mean, I'd love to know more. And that's with the industry, anybody that wants to come in and explain the scenarios that could be. You know, remember, we're 50 years into a state land use system that's locked down pretty hard. I mean, for us to just turn it on its side and say, oh, no, it's okay, for psilocybin, we're going to do this, even though we haven't allowed a lot of things over the years and it's really been shaved to a fine point. So I, I just don't see us throwing out the state land use system because, oh, well, psilocybin's different.
You're, you're defending, you know, you're trying to defend the state land use system now.
I'm just pointing out the state of where we are.
How many dude ranches?
And I've said that many times. I worry about the state land use system kind of running to ground about now, 50 years later. And we love a lot of the values in there, but there's probably some discussions to have. Sorry, Commissioner Adair.
The state land.
Well, I was just going to ask about dude ranches, because I'm thinking like, what do we, I know we have maybe one or two in the whole county. And I'm sure, could we ever get another one approved? You know, so look at that, a dude ranch and, yes. So, you know, just trying to think of an overnight that's legal, that groups of people can stay at. And, right, it really doesn't happen very often. I mean, can they be grandfathered, well, they, oh, they are grandfathered in.
It is a conditionally allowable use.
Right. But I do believe there was one coming up perhaps in Sisters, and then that one got pulled off, didn't it? Isn't that what happened? So. And I, I don't think I've seen it back. So maybe they gave up their dream. Stephanie, are you familiar with that one?
I, Commissioner Adair, I, I might be familiar with the one. There was one that came before me as a hearings officer, but that was two years ago.
Right.
So it's probably something different.
No, it was that one.
Oh, it was that one.
Oh, yeah, no, that's what I was thinking of.
Oh, well, there you go.
There was something out there and.
Yeah, yeah, I remember they, you know, they modified their, their application. They had, some was going to be in the existing home and, you know, but, but yeah, it's, 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 it's been a couple of years and I, and I haven't really heard anything since I issued a decision on that. So, yeah.
I know Long Hollow is down on Holmes Road.
Yeah, right, right.
But I think it historically probably has been here for, what, decades?
Just to finish off the state, the, the point. Just to finish off the state, the point about the state land use planning system. So, we have a state land use planning system, we see legislation modify our state land use planning system on a regular basis. We were just talking about SB 391 the other day, and about the envelope that SB 391 allows us. Similarly, Measure 109 provides us with a new envelope that is, you know, that is of things that are authorized within the state land use planning system, and it is our opportunity to shape that envelope the way that we see appropriate. So, to, you know, just wanted to clarify where I think this fits in with our state land use planning system, which, you know, to, 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 to say that the state land use planning system that you rail against almost every meeting needs to be honored by excluding these, these uses is, I think, not appropriate. And, but I would also like to, to, before Stephanie leaves us, I would like to ask her to talk about some of the vulnerabilities that we may have during this process in terms of, you know, coming up with a time, place, and manner rules that are, that could be viewed as unreasonable, legally unreasonably, legally unreasonable, and how, what we need to be thinking about, and how we need to be protecting ourselves from a youth facility center type situation.
Thank you, Commissioner Chang. That's an excellent question, and, you know, when, when a county or a city is, is looking at what is a reasonable regulation, you know, the purpose, the police power is there to protect health, safety, and welfare. So, you know, we're looking at all three components, and, you know, the, the understanding, or maybe the starting point, is that, you know, any, any regulation, any ordinance adopted is presumed to be advancing the health, safety, and welfare. But if we, if the, if the board is to enact an ordinance that says, you know, you can't have more than a 250 square foot, you know, service center, because we're just, you know, we think that it's going to be super impactful, you know, and you've got all this testimony that shows, you know, to the contrary, that would be arbitrary and capricious, it would not be reasonable. So, the reasonableness is, is one level. Arbitrary and capricious is when you have facts in the record, or, you know, that have come forward to the board at hearings, and you've disregarded those, and put those aside, maybe based on preconceived ideas, or I just don't like it, or not in my backyard type of arguments. So, so it is, it's a process, and I really, I agree, you know, I mean, I've only been here at the county for a week and a half, but even without the opt-out, you know, I mean, we have to, we have to go through this process, and, and there is a lot of fact-finding, there is a lot of information that we need to take in. So, I think that the challenge of adopting reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions is, is heavy with this compressed time period, you know, and so, and unfortunately, the way the law is written, you know, if we don't adopt them and the opt-out fails, then, you know, then people can just go ahead and put applications in, and we have really nothing we're going to be looking at like, you know, what's a similar use. So, you know, it's kind of, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. And, and like I mentioned earlier, it's, it's not just the property owner and the surrounding property owners, it's the people coming to the facility, you know, and, and on the land use side, you know, we're not going to be having anything to say about, you know, that's Oregon Health Authority, you know, as to who's there, and how are they licensed, and all of that. That's outside of the realm of land use. But, you know, transportation impacts, and, and, you know, how many people are coming and going, and, and it's been mentioned, you know, in, in the context of overnight facilities, which is, is not really what we're talking about any longer, but, you know, food service and what have you. There's a lot that goes into balancing, you know, the, the exercise of the police power that the, that the board will be undertaking in, in adopting an ordinance, whatever that ordinance looks like, you know, how is it protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Deschutes County? And then, is it reasonable? Or is it just based on, you know, we have to, we have to do something, you know, I mean, that's, you know, one could argue that that might not be reasonable, or one could also argue that it's not reasonable to open it up as broad as possible because of the potential impacts on health, safety, and welfare. I'm not taking, I have no position on this whatsoever. You know, all I can, all I can do is, is say that you're going to have a lot of people that feel strongly for or against, and, and that's your job as, as the board, you know, to, to consider that in the fact-finding to support an ordinance. And, and so, yeah, there is an opportunity for people to be heard at a reasonable time and a reasonable manner, that's the due process side, and then, you know, to, to take all that input, you know, give direction to CDD to develop ordinances that, that really do advance that purpose overall. Kind of a long-winded explanation, I feel like, you know, a land use professor.
And we're, we're putting information on the record just even by having these discussions.
Great, yeah.
Interested parties are following, you know, the 150,000 registered voters out of our population of 200,000, there's going to be more information to be able to digest, say, oh, that's the conversation, or that's what we're talking about. I mean, it's good just to even be talking about it right now.
Great, thank you.
And if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, as we are collecting testimony on these time, place, and manner rules, we need to be mindful that if people are proposing things to us that could lead to a reasonable system, and we ignore that input, then it opens us up to legal challenge.
It, yes, it depends, you know. I always try to err, as I sat as a hearings officer, to lay out arguments that were presented to me, and obviously, that's in a quasi-judicial role. This is a legislative role, it's different. There's different standards that apply. You don't have to acknowledge every piece of testimony that came in, but if the overwhelming amount of testimony was that, you know, there are going to be all these problems, and, and the, and the board could be argued to have ignored that evidence and going ahead and proceeding in the way, or flip it the other way around. But it is a different standard for legislative actions than it is for quasi-judicial. There is an amount of discretion, more discretion is allowed to the legislative body, which is the Board of County Commissioners. You don't have to, you know, you don't, I mean, if there are 200 people that say, we want it, and 10 that say, we don't, that doesn't mean you have to go forward with what the 200 people want, not at all. It's really the quality of, of the evidence that comes before you, and, and, you know, the consideration on the record, you know, which is what we're developing, so. But ultimately, you know, you're the, you're the policymakers, you're the, you're the ones elected to make these decisions, and legislative decisions might look like quasi-judicial, but they're not.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so we don't need a motion, you are going to proceed, and when then might we expect you back?
So, the timeline-
We do have a timeline here, don't we?
There is a timeline, yeah, at the end of the memo from, from Monday-
Okay, I see it.
But I can just give you a, you know, overview, certainly. We're aiming for the first evidentiary hearing with the Planning Commission on September 29th, and that means that we have to submit our 35-day notice to Department of Land Conservation and Development on August 25th. So, we have to have something in a reason, well, not to use the word reasonable, but in some sort of shape that, that generally reflects what's going to be at the, at the hearing, amendments and findings by that date. So, we have two weeks, 15 days to kind of get that out there, and that doesn't mean we can't, you know, play with it a little bit, and obviously, it's going to, it's, the expectation is the public input from that point forward will, will further finesse it. But we do have to have kind of our first, our first draft ready by August 25th. Depending on how long the Planning Commission deliberations take, we anticipate those would be October 13th and 27th, depending on if they need it, aiming for a board hearing on November 28th. And this is, to be able to deliberate on December 5th, and then first reading December 14th, and second reading December 28th.
I think you've taken care of the, the rest of this year, have you or not?
The tight little container. Spring for Thanksgiving.
Yes, yes, Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Years, who's going to be playing in the Rose Bowl, yes.
Just rolled back our plan to have the week of, between Christmas and New Years, without Board of Commissioners meeting.
I'll be here. There's always Zoom.
Zoom.
Oh, yes, okay, great, thank you.
So, it is, I'm just, I mean, just to follow up on that, basically, our next step is to, we're not coming back to the board in that interim period, we are kind of moving ahead with kind of drafting based on board direction and for that 35-day notice, correct?
That's correct. We will be initiating a legislative amendment and formally notifying the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and giving the Planning Commission the opportunity to hold the first evidentiary hearing.
Are there other county jurisdictions going down this path, parallel with us?
As we understand it, Jackson, Wasco, and possibly Hood River County, but I suspect, I do anticipate Wasco and Jackson developing TPM. Jackson County, as I understand it, is considering an opt-out ordinance to refer to the voters, but they are also contemplating a set of TPM amendments if that opt-out fails. Wasco County, to my knowledge, is not referring the opt-out to the voters, but will be developing TPM amendments to get them in place before January 2nd of the new year.
Well, and that'll, so that'll be a good sounding board or comparison to see, you know, according to their county code and what we're posing and they're proposing, you'll be able to-
We're tracking and coordinating with them, and as I think we mentioned, there, there are going to be nuances because the zoning schemes within each county differ. We're such a unique and diverse county in terms of our various zones and unincorporated communities and whatnot, but I, I think you'll see, and we will certainly report back on it, a similar approach as the one that was outlined under Option 1. Again, just due to the scheduling and the challenges of going through a formal legislative amendment and developing TPM amendments that can be justified.
So, Peter, did you mention Clackamas County, then? Are they adopting, are they, I know they've putting the opt-out measure on their ballot, are they working on TPM?
I haven't heard yet, but it's possible, and certainly, I, we can reach out, we will, we will reach out to the county planning directors to get it, we meet monthly, and we'll have an understanding of, you know, psilocybin is, is a, is a, a topic that's on every agenda, so we'll certainly keep this board, and all, certainly the Planning Commission to the extent that they're interested, with an understanding of how other jurisdictions are currently appro, county jurisdictions are approaching psilocybin.
Okay, so they list that Sherman and Wheeler were still undecided, but-
I haven't heard about those other counties.
They're on the, on my memo that they're undecided at this moment, as of yesterday.
Yeah, I mean, Deschutes County, as I take a breath, is at the forefront of this issue. You are, to my knowledge, you are the first, first county that officially adopted an opt-out ordinance to refer the matter to the voters. You are the first county that has directed staff to develop TPM amendments with a specific concept in mind, and, you know, if all things being equal, we will likely be one of the first that is before their, our Planning Commission to contemplate these TPM amendments. So, we don't have, we're, we don't have the luxury of looking ahead to other jurisdictions that have had these conversations, that have engaged their legal councils, that have engaged their county commissioners with, with questions and comments. I dare say most counties are, are tracking our process, and we have been very transparent about the, with the memorandums. I know Dave has, he mentioned previously just concerning the opt-out ordinance framework, that I believe that was shared, and there was, there was sort of acknowledgement about how, how that terminology and framework was, was useful for other counties. So, Deschutes County is leading this effort, you know, as we've done in the past under other topics.
I was under the impression that there were other counties ahead of us in terms of moving ahead with their opt-out ballot measures, but-
Not to my knowledge. Jackson County, very, it could be possibly today, is, is, is holding their hearing about an opt-out ordinance, but I'm, I'm not aware of, I don't think Wasco County has initiated, for example, their, their legislative amendment through DLCD, I think they're planning on doing that in September, so.
I was, maybe, maybe it was, maybe they were just expressing their intention, but, you know, I, I was hearing about Yumitilla County, and, you know, in that case, 62% of the, the county voters said they didn't want psilocybin when Measure 109 went before them, and I, I think that's an entirely appropriate scenario for people to refer an opt-out ballot measure to their voters, but.
Actually, the cities of Hermiston and Pendleton and Yumitilla County are doing the opt-out, so, in noticing things, Culver and Jefferson County is, but I don't see any other county, any other cities in our region listed.
We can, we will certainly keep the board abreast of, of other counties and their processes. I mean, Tanya will, is the point person at this point, and, and we've already made overtures to Wasco County's Planning Director, Jackson County's Planning Director, and as we receive more information about their processes, we'll share that information in a timely manner, you know, likely with the board when we're, after the Planning Commission's, you know, made a recommendation, but we, I anticipate Tanya would, would share with the Planning Commission and the public, and the, the psilocybin industry that is participating in these processes, what other counties are doing, and summarizing, and I emphasize the latter because we're not, it's not our role to, to understand or articulate the finer points of other counties' approaches, but we would summarize how other counties are preparing their time, and place, and manner amendments, so that there's, there's context, and we can learn from one another, and even the discourse that's occurring. So, again, by the time we come back to the board in November for a work session, we'll, we'll have a lot to share, not just about the Planning Commission's recommendation, but also how other counties and have, are proceeding with, with similar amendments.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work on this issue.
Thank you.
Do we have other items?
The title, ballot title paperwork, I hadn't seen, or if-
I forwarded that to you folks yesterday.
Yeah, so, I just happen to have a-
Printed piece.
Storm event at my house with power out and everything yesterday, so maybe I'm missing an email.
Yeah, you, you folks did indicate, though, that you wanted to address that today, and we are kind of coming down to the wire, so I would certainly encourage that we get some finalized language. I did forward you the ballot title, the measure text, and the summary, and I know last meeting there was some indication that perhaps you folks might want to edit that, so we're, we're able to do whatever it is you would like us to do in that context.
So, this is a proposed ballot information, caption, question, and summary?
That's information that would go to the county clerk that would be published in the paper, and then ultimately find its way onto the ballot. That's the language, so.
Do you have a copy of this?
You want to alter that, now's the time.
I didn't read, yes.
Well, if we want to maybe, yeah, yeah, maybe, yeah, so let's all get focused and make sure we have.
We have a copy.
Here's a, yeah, if we can get another copy for Commissioner Adair, and we can all just come back in a few moments.
It should be in your email that you-
Well, that's true.
That's what I was going to look.
Oh, okay, well.
Go away.
Well, and I'll read it out here, just to see how it sounds, too.
Could you read it out?
Concerning psilocybin manufacturing and service centers in unincorporated Deschutes County. Shall psilocybin product manufacturing and service centers be prohibited in Deschutes County's unincorporated areas? And in brackets, says outside of city limits, question mark. So, that's the question to vote yes or no on.
By now, I will note the caption you read, that has a 10-word limitation, and the question you just read has a 20-word limitation, and I believe we're right up to the max on those.
Okay.
The summary has a 175-word limitation, and we do have a little bit of flexibility in that, we're, we're not up at the 175. I don't know exactly what we are, I can count it quickly here, I usually rely on the clerk to do it because he has a machine and does a little difference, but we have, I think, quite a bit of room in the summary, if, if there were some-
I mean, my only suggested addition, which we discussed the other day, would be to add to this first sentence in the summary, including 52.8% of Deschutes County voters. And I think that that is entirely appropriate background to share with the voters of Deschutes County. You know, the example I just gave in Yumitilla County, where people voted 62% against Measure 109- where people voted 62% against Measure 109. I would want to tell people that. I wouldn't want to tell the voters that. You know, when, when this came before the Yumitilla County voters a year and a half ago or two years ago, 62% of you said, said no. And in, in our case, in Deschutes County, I believe it's appropriate to say that 52.8% or a margin of nearly 6,000 voters in Deschutes County said that they, they wanted access to psilocybin services.
Well, the fact that we're, we're protecting the public safety of rural Deschutes County, where I believe it was 19 of 24 precincts voted against it. We know it can be in the cities. None of the cities to date in Deschutes County have put in for an opt-out. So, I feel that that's just as relevant. And, you know, it's, it's the rural community that will be impacted, the unincorporated community.
We, we also heard about, well, we know that service centers are not allowed in residential neighborhoods, which makes large parts of any city unavailable for these, these facilities. And we also heard that land simply costs more per square foot or per acre in a incorporated area versus an unincorporated area. So, in terms of, in terms of the realities, the, the practical realities of providing access to these services, excluding unincorporated areas, it will have impacts on accessibility of these services. And I'd just like to emphasize again that we are not just the land use authority for the unincorporated portion of Deschutes County, but we are the local mental health authority for the entire county, both the incorporated areas and the unincorporated areas. And we should view psilocybin as, for what it is. A potential, you know, a potential treatment that has been rigorously studied by many top medical research institutions across the nation and found to have efficacy in treating anxiety, PTSD, depression, and addiction to other substances without being addictive itself. So, as, as the local mental health authority, as the community mental health program, I think it is our responsibility to provide access to these services.
I'm not opposed to saying something about it passed in Deschutes County, and even by the percentage is fine with me. Because this is, this delineates, you know, there's a body of electorate, which is going to be a county-wide vote, and it's, we're talking about the rural county. I'm not opposed to what you're asking here, so.
Yep.
Just letting you know.
And, you know, to the people who you want to vote against it, you know, to, or to vote yes to opt-out, maybe such a small percentage margin will be motivational for them. It could help your cause.
I'm here for all the people to make good decisions. I don't have a cause in this situation.
I was speaking to Commissioner Dare, who.
Okay.
Doesn't want the percentage in there because she doesn't want.
Oh, well, yeah, so I'm just starting, yeah, this is, if we can come up with some words. Commissioner Dare, are you opposed to changing this, or?
I was comfortable with the way it was.
Okay, okay. So, let me just read this, first part of this then. So, in November 2020, ballot Measure 109 was passed by the electors of Oregon. The measure created a statewide program to allow licensed providers to administer psilocybin-producing mushrooms and fungi products to individuals 21 of years of age or older. So, in November 2020, ballot Measure 109 was passed by the electors of Oregon. So, if we say something about passing, approved by, in Deschutes County by, yeah, so I don't mind having that in there, approved in Deschutes, by, by Deschutes County voters.
By what was it, 52.8 or something?
We could say 52.8. We could say a majority. I don't have a preference between those.
Okay, they just.
I like 52.8. We live in a 49-51 world. And this is, this is good information. This is rural land use. So, even somebody in a city can say, okay, is this the intention? And we're, we're working on the land use. So, now we're going to know more. We're going to have more information by the time that people vote on this. So, I, I mean, if you want us to get this to a voter, everything.
I mean, we could also, that's, in that same first paragraph, we could take out mushroom and fungi because mushroom are fungi. I think that's redundant.
There you go.
That'll save us two words, Dave.
I think we have.
We don't have a word problem.
We have ample words. So, if you want to add the, I, I think I'm hearing you say you would want a second sentence there after the first one saying ballot Measure 109 was approved by 52.8% of electors in Deschutes County.
Or you could just tack on a comma and a paragraph, and a, and a phrase that says, including a majority of Deschutes County voters, or 52.8% of Deschutes County voters.
Whatever the board wants me to put, I'm happy. It's your call.
So, now I just want to see it, I guess, however we're going to write it down.
So, do we have to have that approved today, or can it come back to us on Monday? When does this need to be, Steve?
I think it needs to be approved today. Where I don't want to cut it that close.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable. If there's a glitch and the clerk catches it, you're putting me in a real bad spot.
Yep, not a problem.
I mean, but we're wordsmithing now at a, at a, at a level that.
We have a couple of, of executive sessions. Do you want to just maybe type up a couple of options and then come back after our executive sessions to?
If we could do that or have.
That would be great.
So, they can see what it looks like? I don't know. I'm just.
Sure, I was planning to be at the executive sessions, which could make it a little difficult to go up to my office and type these things out. But, that being said.
Well, and, so today's.
It sounds like, it sounds like.
We can schedule at 1:00.
How many words are we doing?
Well, we have 175-word max. I, I have to do the count, so I don't know exactly what we have. When I did count it a while back, I thought we had a pretty good gap. So, the sentence, the full sentence, I believe, would fit. So, the, the, just adding to the first sentence would, would, would also fit. I'm pretty confident, but I need to do the count.
Yep. I don't mind reconvening at 1:00. I mean, it's, it's a Wednesday.
I made it.
I don't want to make you reconvene just on account of that.
No, I have.
Sounds like a second one.
I made an appointment. Does it look like this one is going to end early?
I mean, so it sounds like we had two proposals. We either have a second sentence that says ballot Measure 109 was approved by 52.
Can you check the words on yours?
Yeah, I've got the words. Is it just this section that we count?
Yes.
Because that's 138. That's, that's words.
Yeah, so he did a word count. He's got 138.
So, we're good?
So, yeah, that's why I said we, we had plenty of room for a, a sentence. So, as I'm hearing, I'm hearing two options here, two proposals. One is a new sentence, an additional sentence. Ballot Measure 109 was approved by 52.8% of the electors in Deschutes County. The other one is, at the end of that first sentence, take off the period after Oregon and put comma, including by 52.8% of the electors in Deschutes County.
I like a second sentence.
The comma?
No, the first one.
You want the first, full sentence?
Yeah.
Okay, and Commissioner Chang wants the comma?
I'm, I'm fine either way.
First full sentence.
I'm just trying to keep you within your word limit.
Okay. We will be within the word limit. We will add that, and that'll be part of the, the summary on the, on the document. I will have to redo the SEL 805, which is the election form that you authorized Commissioner Dare to sign back on July 20th when we handled this previously. So, I'll have another one of these later today for your signature, Commissioner.
Doesn't it, you want it signed today, then?
If you're available today, yeah. Yep.
Decision made. Thank you very much.
All right. And that's right, people can actually put in documents to support it or either way.
Yeah, there's a voter's pamphlet. Folks will have an opportunity to put arguments for and against, run campaigns, I suppose, whatever they all choose to do.
Okay. Sounds like, sounds like we have a plan. So, any other items? No? Okay, so can we go to executive then? We need to go to executive? Can we take a two-minute break then?
Recording stopped.